I'm not going out without it.
Running without it.
Yeah. I have fallen twice when I was with people. Twice out of nine years. I tripped over curbs both times.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and begin tonight's study session. On the agenda, we have one item, which is short-term rentals.
Don't everybody boo?
How cool those are. I think everybody wants to be done with short-term rentals.
We wanna collect a fees for short-term rentals.
Okay, I didn't get this included in the packet. Cause I just kind of worked with it today. Are we ready, Mayor, or did I?
Okay. Yeah, I just passed out a draft of. And it really kinda goes along with the memo that Jane and I had in the packet for tonight. Everybody remembers, we started back in February of 2018. And honestly, it has changed even across the country. I mean, everybody's had tons of changes and there's just lots of things being evolved over this. So, I highlighted in red what will correspond with what we were talking about in the ordinance. I'm gonna start, though, with let Jane speak to the first part on the zoning ordinance. We've prepared a list.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry?
Oh, yeah, I did.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Exhibit B. That Jane put together on, just so we could eyeball all the districts they would be allowed in. There are a few that would have some special uses to them. And then there's a few in here that we've talked about that they may not be allowed in. I'm gonna let Jane take over on this list. What is not in the list is A1, A2, and RE, which we need to, that needed to be in. We don't know where to put them in the list.
So, on exhibit B, we, I outlined the zoning districts that, from what I remember in several of the meetings, that the short-term rentals would be permitted as an allowed use. And so, you can see that list there. And then the districts requiring council approval, special use to house the short-term rentals. So, of course, any PUD or SPUD zoning district that was not adopted with the understanding that a short-term rental use would be allowed, they would have to come back to city council and amend their existing zoning that they have.
Councilmember Beerman? If we pass this, are we gonna put this on PUD and SPUD zoning applications so they know when they file for it that this will be a restriction on their use?
Are we gonna put it on existing?
No, like, for on applications so that going forward, people who have or looking for a PUD or a SPUD know that this will be a restriction?
We have to let them know. You have to designate the uses within your PUD that you want, right?
Councilmember Wilson?
Okay, I'm trying to remember the conversations we had. What was the thought on not allowing A1 and A2?
We, we really, it was just mentioned last time, I think, what are we gonna do about A1 and A2? It came up in our discussion, and I didn't put this in my memo, I think about hip campers?
Yeah, I have it in the, I see that, that I recommended that, or I'd like to see that happen, but I don't know why we wouldn't, you know, if you have a house on a farm and there's a room, and a lot of times there's, I don't know, it seems like that would be an allowable, and it would actually probably be less problematic than a residential.
I think we were just looking for direction for clarification.
I was gonna clarify. Councilmember Beerman? Just to clarify your point, we weren't, we didn't leave it out in order to restrict, but you weren't at the October meeting, and I didn't have an opportunity to check with you about it, so I didn't wanna.
I figured it was that, that I.
I didn't wanna be presumptuous, so that was just, kinda put a pin in that one.
Okay, well, I think we should add it back into there. If we allow it anywhere, we should allow it there, too.
And then, the districts not allowing the short-term rentals, as surveyed in the zoning ordinance currently, we have the CR, which is the country residential, the industrial districts, and the M1 industrial district. But I do have a question, if I can ask, and I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this. So, and we've got legal here to answer this question, but if, if we say that a short-term rental is an allowed use in the R1, within the residential districts, are we okay saying that a commercial use can be in that residential district and not cause a problem for allowing commercial uses in a residential district? Make sure we're all on the same page.
Just a thought, Jane, when, when you describe it that way, in my mind, what comes to mind is occupancy, and the occupancy remains a residential occupancy. So, you know, not all commercial uses are the same, and in this particular instance, that commercial use is still a residential occupancy.
It's a place to sleep, right? As long as they don't, and you've written in there that they can't have social events, and.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's go, I don't know who put their hand up first, but Hall, and then you guys can fight it out.
Okay, I, I think that's been the rub through this entire conversation. Is it, is it lodging, or is it a short-term rental? And, you know, I don't, I don't know that we've really ever settled on that point, which is why the R1 keeps coming up. Because I was just looking this over again today. To operate a bed and breakfast, which would be a commercial use in R1, you have to have a special use permit, and you can only do four bedrooms or less. So, if it's commercial, then it's like bed and breakfast. If we're not gonna call it commercial, and we're just gonna call it home sharing, then that's something else. But, you know, part of where I've been coming from the entire time has been if we insist that people who wanna operate a bed and breakfast in R1, they have to go through the special use process. So, what's the difference? Because it's not really home sharing anymore if we're gonna allow for licenses. And the other interesting thing that I kinda forgot about is in bed and breakfast, type 1, you have to reside there. And type 2, you have to reside there, if you're operating in R1 or R2. So, that's a complete inconsistency between those two operations, in my mind.
Mayor, may I just interject? That I was gonna bring up owner occupied later. That's something that, I hadn't, I had kinda forgot about it, but I got it back in the discussion. It's on my notes.
Yeah.
And I think we talked about this a little bit at the October meeting, that I, I think what this has brought up are some, some revisions that we need to make in terms of our ordinances pertaining to bed and breakfast. Where I think things get a little gray is that you could own 45 rental properties in R1, and you're making money off of them, and you're not living there. And, you know, you could rent it for 31 days.
So, is that a commercial use?
Under the way our ordinance is currently written, no. So, that's why, that's why, you know, we've kind of been going back and forth on it, which is why I, I have hoped that we would take the track of treating these more like rental properties with the recognition that this has shown a light on some of the changes we need to make with some of our other licensing, like with bed and breakfast. I don't necessarily see the utility in requiring anyone to live there. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that I think, that I think we do need to work on, I would say, separate and aside from this.
Yeah, I know, we keep getting stuck here, I realize that.
Jane can. Sorry, did you have an answer to that?
I forget.
Well, I'm just gonna point out the country residential down here, what, what was the, I mean, and I may have said, "We don't want any country residential," I can't remember what my feelings were on this.
I don't remember talking about that one at all, so.
But, that's, yeah, country residential seems like it kind of falls in residential.
What is country residential?
It's like those little one or two acre additions that, there's a few of them out there.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's rural commercial, I'm so sorry. It's rural commercial district.
Not country commercial.
Country residential is land use plan, sorry.
Okay.
I was thinking.
Rural what?
Yeah, it's rural commercial.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're talking about that.
I must've shipped yours.
Obviously, I missed one meeting, so.
I was doing something else, no, no, rural commercial.
Okay, nevermind.
Councilmember Hope Scott?
So, going back, I'm trying to remember back in some of the study, or the committees, isn't there a, like a three strikes and you're out sort of thing for what we've talked about? And then they lose their, and can you want to operate as a short-term rental?
There is a provision in there, councilmember, that talks about denials, suspensions, or revocations. If there's, and that's the very last section. And we would do it as, I think I'm right, I might be right, Brenda, is that we would have a licensing review board on that type of thing? Like we would do on other licensed properties like alcohol, or, and depending on frequency of repeated violations, whether it was intentionally or knowingly, and the degree which the owner or occupant has endangered the public health, safety, and welfare of others, which is pretty broad.
Just to follow up to that, because I feel like in the oversight committee, we had talked about, like, a neighbor is causing a disruption to the neighbors or something like that, then there would be either a local contact, the home contact, or then, within thirty minutes, an hour.
Yes, it's like.
So, do you have, in my, in my word, we have some issues with the short-term, the fare difficulty on Greenwood, and so, they're really waiting us out to see what's going to happen, and so, as far as if they're, you know, still experiencing disruptions and stuff, like, what's the process for them if the, if this owner isn't responsive?
Well, right now, that particular property is still under an injunction from the district court, so they are prohibited from, they're not allowed to have a short-term rental operating. And from what I understand, I don't believe they are, but I have not heard if there's a complaint. But they say if they were, they say if they were licensed, we, we are gonna require, know who the owner is, and then they have to have a local contact, and they have to respond within, for emergency conditions, within an hour being notified by a guest or city employee or by an individual. And we, you know, if we responded, and nobody responded after we called, that could be a violation or a problem. If they get there and it's parking, party houses, wedding reception, bachelorette parties, those would also be against any of the conditions that are allowed there. And those are things, I believe, if I'm right, Brenda, that we could bring, then the short-term rental license holder, within Beaver Park, before a license review board, and we would review that. They could be cited also, there could also be other indicators of ordinance violations that they could still be cited for, which would be parking, you know, underage drinking, whatever else, all ordinances would still apply.
So, is there a provision, if they are in violation, would they have to stop operating until, I guess it was reviewed and actioned? Or would they still be able to operate after a violation?
We typically don't ask for them to cease operations at the first, at the beginning of the review board process. Now, as we go through that process, depending on the nature of the violations and what's happening, and whether or not they're cooperating, a suspension can be placed on their license temporarily until we come to final resolution, but that's not the typical process.
Councilmember Beerman?
So, for this particular property in question, if we pass this, have they been the subject of a violation of the city code already?
The Greenwood property?
Or are we still kinda going through that process?
It's almost been two years since they, we've had the injunction on them. I think there was one other guest that was cited for something. I can't say for sure there wasn't a parking violation a couple of years ago, but there's been no, from what I understand, no short-term rental activity at the Greenwood property.
The only reason I bring that up is because it would, it would put them under that section where they might not even be able to get an application when we pass this because of violations that have happened in the last two years. I would, that does bring up a point, I wonder maybe if there's a little bit of language that we could put in there to make it very, very clear that they may not be allowed to renew?
Never know when I'm supposed to get to talk, Mayor, so. I, I did add as an, as a, if you'll look at the red that I put on there, one option that we had talked about at the October one, that if they were denied, suspended, or revoked, and they wanted to submit a new application, they would have to go through the special use process.
Okay, see, I had, I had thought that, it seems like this section was only for initial applications. Does this, does this cover renewals as well? Is that?
Well, Part 3 would. That, that little, the red that I've put in there.
Okay, well, I just, I guess maybe I'm, maybe I'm disproportionately focusing on the word "application" versus "license renewal." Do they have to submit a new application to renew?
No. But if they, if they wanna get a license renewal, you have to prove that you paid your taxes.
Oh, okay, and it's not the subject of outstanding city code or state law violations? Okay.
And if they don't provide all the necessary information, then we may not renew. And if there's a violation of any provision of the city code or other applicable law, we may deny, suspend, or revoke.
Okay.
So, we do have some safeguards in there on renewal.
Are we relying on them being honest that they haven't violated any city code in order to renew?
Well, we would know if there was a violation.
Okay, we're gonna double check?
Yeah.
Okay, that was really where I was going with that question.
We double check all, if they have any outside outstanding traffic tickets, utility bills, if they're gonna be subject to room tax, all of that has to be checked before they can get any license.
Okay, and then one quick follow-up, Alex. Is there any way to put in here, is it, it's, okay, I guess, put it this way, if a guest is cited for a violation of the city code, does that go with the property? So, if you have a history of bringing inappropriate people to your rental property, and those people are cited consistently, but the property is not?
There was like a party house there, and we, we went to a nuisance party or had a social host, yes, that would be part of our board review.
You would, so you would still cite the property in addition to the guest?
We wouldn't, we would cite the, the guest, not the owner, not in a criminal court.
That's just, that's where I'm getting a little bit antsy with this, is that if a person is cited for a violation of city code, but the property is not, how do we then ensure that problem properties are adequately addressed through this?
Because we, we would know that that person was at the property of a short-term rental, and.
Okay, so that property address would still pop up, so it would still be linked?
Takes me a minute, but.
Okay.
On renewal, we would look and see if there was any violation.
Citations that happened at that property, even if it wasn't the owner who was cited?
Right.
Okay, great.
The owner's not going to be cited for the criminal action of a guest.
And I, and I, I wouldn't want them to, I would just want to be sure that that property is properly tracked, so that a license renewal could then be addressed appropriately. Fantastic.
Councilmember Scott?
I have a question under covenants, fees, restrictions, early requirements, under the, well, actually, I'm sorry, it's the fee section. So, the annual fees for issuing some renewal, you know, 150, why is there a removal from the $50 for annual?
I hadn't got to that part yet, and so, I'll jump up there. I'll jump over, cause we talked about license, it's next, councilmember, on inspections. And that's just something I put in here so we could discuss it, it's not a, not a done deal, that's just, we talked about inspections, and we've talked about, and I notice Kelvin's here, the supervisor of the code enforcement, too, I talked to Oklahoma City quite a bit in the last week or so, seeing how things were going there, and they don't do inspections. They have, and it's attached to the memorandum that I sent out as Part C, they have the property owner fill out this affidavit saying all this is, is, is working, and then, instead of actually, they said, there's no way they could do an inspection on every property in Oklahoma City. We, today, I looked at our little dashboard, and there's 200 currently today in Norman. So, and if this isn't, not the direction the council wants to go, and we still wanna do the inspections provided by city staff, Jane and her staff, or whoever would be tasked in doing it, will do that, and we would need to keep the, the $50 inspection fee.
Paul, you wanna jump in?
Just the, the thought in looking at the way Oklahoma City's decided to do it, I'm assuming in that application, there's some kind of waiver of liability against the city so that we don't get sued if the homeowner, the operator of the Airbnb did not have a fire extinguisher, and, you know, somebody had a bad day. So, I think if, if we inspect, then, you know, we're there and eyes on, and we do take responsibility, and if we're not gonna inspect, then we need to make sure we have the proper language to protect the city. If they light on their affidavit, and their homeowner's insurance is gonna take the whole hit.
Councilmember Scott, your follow-up?
Yep, so, thank you, because I feel like they are a business, and they're operating, and they're hosting and stuff, so they should be, since they are, you know, businesses, should be required to get inspections, just like any other company else. I also know that you guys are also busy, so I don't know if we have the manpower to conduct 200 inspections on each one, but I just kinda feel that way, and so, if there's a waiver, making sure there's no liability on us, okay, but at the same time, since other businesses have to be inspected, I feel like they should also be paying those fees.
And I just brought that forward as another option for the inspection part of this.
Councilmember Beerman?
There's a part of me that really likes the idea of inspecting all of them at the same time, I would also love to see that happen with rental, just regular rental properties, because I think we all have many, many examples of rental properties that are not maintained in even a public health perspective. So, I feel like, so, if we go through a couple of years of inspections, everything seems to be going well, we have very few issues with inspections, I assume we know exactly what we're inspecting for? Okay, yeah, exhibit C, okay. Would there be the possibility of maybe saying, "Okay, we have been doing this for five years, it seems that we don't really have too many issues, we're going to do away with the inspections?"
That would be the direction of the council.
But we could do that. Does every business that gets a license from the city get inspected in some way?
Food and beverage.
Those that have licenses do, yes.
All businesses that have licenses get inspected for something?
Keep in mind, that's a very small number, comparison to the number of businesses in Norman, but all, all the ones that we do issue licenses to get inspections, not on an annual basis necessarily, but they get inspections to get their license.
Okay.
And I'll just add, Kelvin had provided me information, where his, his code enforcement staff does about 65 for things like mobile homes, hotel motel, sorority, fraternity.
Okay.
There's a list, but he, they do about 65 currently.
Maybe a good way to split the baby would be requiring it on initial application, maybe not on renewal? I don't know how people feel about that. That way, we kind of balance the public health and safety risk with the time and ability of our staff to handle.
What about every couple of years?
We also require, it actually goes with the owner of the business, so to speak. So, if a new owner comes in and changes the business, or, or, well, if it's a new owner, it's a new owner, and there's a new tax ID number, new everything, they have to go through the whole process again, of getting inspections again, so that also triggers inspections.
Councilmember Scanlon?
I like the idea of inspections, and what occurs to me is that initial, for granting a license, I think they should be inspected. I would propose that we do random inspections. People can submit this certification, and we waive the fee, I, I, otherwise, we're targeting people if we collect a fee for inspecting them on a random basis, but do random inspections, and if there are complaints, that's cause for inspection as well.
I like it, yeah.
But inspect them first, I mean, when they apply for the first class?
On the initial granting of the license, after that, it's random.
Yeah, I like that.
They certify, but we're gonna check as we can on whether or not they're really certifying correctly. If they're not, there's a penalty. And if, if we have reports, complaints, or whatever, that's also cause for inspection.
Jane?
So, with those, with those inspections from complaints, would those only be taken if they had been a tenant staying there, as opposed to a neighbor that's mad?
Probably, but we'd have to, we'd have to define the criteria, I mean.
I just would hate to get a bunch of calls because a neighbor was mad, as opposed to somebody staying there, and they had an issue because there was something wrong.
I'd have a hard time knowing how a neighbor would know whether or not the smoke detectors are working.
Councilmember Hall?
I'm gonna follow up on what you just said before I get back to the other question. So, if, cause we have talked about this, too, about what remedy neighbors have in residential neighborhoods especially, but if it was any kind of, like, if it was a noise thing or a parking thing, that would be.
That's different, but as far as gaining access to.
But they would have remedy to complain about what was happening at the house, it just wouldn't be as far as what was inside the house, that would be for inspection purposes only, okay?
I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna comment, I, I really do like that idea, but it seems like as we get this off the ground, as much as I am cognizant of the increased burden on our staff, it just seems really important to establish where we are as we, you know, bring all of these 200-plus businesses on, online, and the licensing process, so it seems really important to have that initial inspection, but I do like the idea.
I'm agreeing with that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, when I've, I've looked over the last few months, and the, the other main topic that needs to be decided on, if, there may be a few more, but is, the note we talked about, and it was throughout the last two months' minutes, is we said we wanted no more than four people, four applications per applicant, and if, if there was more than four, so on your fifth one, you would need to do a special use. Is that still good? I mean, a person could have four dotted around town, or on one, but if they got the fifth one, they'd need to do a special use, that's, that's what I got from the last meeting, is.
There was no specific intent with four? It was that we had some who didn't want any restrictions, and at least one who wanted one? So, to kind of find some middle ground for those who maybe weren't there for the October meeting, that was how we came to four? It wasn't really directed by.
Arbitrary, but it's as good as any.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was absolutely arbitrary, it seemed, it was more than one and less than unlimited, so, like, just, just to put that out there, that there was no direct desire for four, so, I, full disclosure, I was one of the ones who didn't want any limits, so. limits, so.
Councilmember Hall?
Which kind of brings us back full circle to, is it a commercial use or not? So, if you have more than one, then I think that, then we're leaning towards, yes, it's a commercial use, especially in residential areas.
Which again, brought me back to rental properties. It's like, well, I know. Genie's life, this is the story of Genie's life right now.
Well, but if we, if I'm right, Jane, on this, if we want to license for all zoning districts except for these, the PUDs and the SPUDs and the few of those industrials, then they would be allowed, they would just be allowed. Just to give you a little, remember, Stillwater has decided, you know, that if there's a protest, they do special use. If there's not a protest, then you, you get the license. Oklahoma City, if your owner occupied, and that was, I wanted to bring up that last topic on owner occupied. Oklahoma City, if your owner occupied, you just get to get your license. If you're not owner occupied, and you fall after the grandfathered in time, and, and if you're in a special, in a historic district, then you have to go through special use. So, both of those, those are about the only, there's not that many cities in Oklahoma that pass anything. They're kind of hybrids of each other. So I guess it really might, my, what I really want to clarify today, if we can, is, is where we're gonna allow these, are we gonna license them in these lists of zoning districts, except for Councilmember Hall. But I mean, is that our decision today? And are you happy with the, up to four, you, you just get to get a license, and after four, you'll go through a special use? And then the other, only other special use is if you've been denied, revoked, or suspended, and you want back in the short-term rental business, then you have to get a special use. I feel like a lot of these other things we've, we've answered, and those are kind of my last remaining ones that I keep, I'm on high center.
Councilmember Hall?
I was really struck again, because now that we have this dashboard in place, and that we can see what's actually going on. So, your report as of today, and you mentioned earlier, we have 200 Airbnb or home sharing that are operating currently right now in Norman, Oklahoma. And 76% of those are single-family and an entire home, which suggests that it's not owner-occupied.
Correct.
Right? Okay. So, you know, we've been at this for a really long time. We know that there's been really egregious complaints in your ward on a particular property. What kind of complaints have we had so far?
Helen, that's the only one.
Okay. So, as much as we just keep chasing the, the chicken and the egg here, and I, I do feel like it's important to keep moving forward now, and to be able to start collecting the tax and the licensing and all of that kind of thing. So, I think we, we probably just do need to move ahead and not keep splitting hairs, and, you know, allow the use, and keep it consistent, and keep it as simple as we can for on the enforcement piece. And, and, and see what happens. Get it rolling. At least we'll have accountability now. At least we'll know who's operating. And, you know, for me, and the long journey on, on this particular topic, I think I'm at a place where they're operating unregulated right now. We're getting no benefit to the city for them operating. And there haven't been any complaints, with the exception of one really bad one. Let's just try it and see. And if we run into problems, we'll just have to come back and revisit. And I'll, you know, be the first one to bring that to everyone's attention.
I have no doubt.
But I do think we've talked about it plenty, and if we're comfortable with the language, and if you're comfortable with the things that still need resolution. I did want to also just clarify on the notification. We did decide to follow the same process of the Historic District Commission and just keep it to the adjacent properties.
Right. We talked about-
I think that, I think that'll work.
Who gets the list? It may be that we require Councilmember Hall that the owner go to the county courthouse themselves and get the adjacent property people's names. There may be some tweaking to do on that. We really don't, I don't believe we want to go down the road of having to get a, purchase a certified list of about $250. So, there's only probably, when, adjacent, probably, I'm probably, probably about six houses or something.
Yeah.
And I, I did want to say just east of 60th, there were, there are eight. I counted. So there's not very many out in the rural areas. And hip campers are on our monitoring service, whatever they are. I don't know if they say hip camping on there, but.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, so.
This is a point of clarification. It really is a very simple process when you're putting in an application for the Historic District Commission. It is on the applicant to figure it out. And it literally is who's next door to you, who's behind you, who's across the street from you. So it potentially maximum of four.
Yeah, it's not very many.
Yeah. And it is up to the applicant to present that information to the commission. So it's pretty simple. But it does allow notification, and I think that's important.
And to provide all the information on who to contact.
Yeah. Yeah. So I do like that part.
Do we just send it to the address of the owner on Historic District, or the property owner?
That's what I was gonna ask.
Do, I, I need to clarify, I'll ask on East in a moment. If we send it to the property owner, I own this house owner, and also, I don't believe we'd know who the tenant was if it was a-
Right.
But if it's a-
I think it goes to the property owner.
It goes to the property owner that's listed on the assessors', assessors' website.
That's welcome.
I have to talk these things through with my head for a second.
Yeah.
Well, and then the direction?
Councilmember Patron, do you have a question?
I just wanted to follow up on the HOA's issue.
And we talked about that last time, and that's when I added, after I saw Stillwater did this, and when I added in Section 3504, that, you know, if HOA, or there's other covenants or agreements there, then, then they, it's subject to whatever would be applicable by an HOA or anything else. If an HOA does not allow them, because some HOAs don't allow renting at all, even for long-term rentals, then, then the property owner in that HOA would have to abide by their HOA rules.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Beerman?
Sorry, this just made me realize. Did we, is that how we addressed the concern of a tenant trying to get a short-term rental license?
It says in here, the owner of the, somewhere in here, it says the owner of the property can get it. Not, not a tenant. It has to be the owner of the property making the application.
Great. Just wanted to be sure.
Your hand is twitchy, Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, it is. I'm just waiting to see if anybody else had any. So we are not, because we haven't implemented this, we are currently not collecting any tax.
Anybody operating now is operating illegally too.
Okay, okay.
Sales tax?
No.
Councilmember Scott?
So, we're not collecting the use tax, like the online sales tax here?
Can't. It's not a set.
We're not collecting room tax.
Room tax, because that would be, I was actually wondering about that earlier, and I forgot that question, because I figured we were collecting something from-
I just want to make sure, because I wasn't, yeah, I didn't think we were, but just wanted to clarify.
Now, I, I don't operate one. They may pay some kind of estate tax, I don't know, but we are not collecting any hotel motel tax or sales tax associated with that. That's why we want to get this rolling, so they'll be required. And it's on the owner, on the owner to make those monthly submissions. It's, and that is, if we'll go through just real quick.
Is Airbnb not collecting it and remitting it? They said they were.
They're not collecting and remitting it to the city of Norman. We don't have an agreement with them.
They said they were going to, though, if we pass this.
If we pass it, yes.
I thought you were saying that under this agreement, it was gonna be on the owner of the property to remit monthly hotel motel tax, and I was like, uh-uh, uh-uh.
Well, it's on the owner, if, between them and their social platform, to figure that out. We just need to get the monthly report. The monitoring in the last paragraph in there, and I, I have a feeling we're gonna need to bring back the final thing. We're gonna have one more before we go to counts, before we go get approval. I don't know, that's up to you all, but, is, there are some other services we can purchase from this monitoring service. And one really doesn't, they're gonna charge us more than what they already do, but a little deeper dive into giving a specific rental rate, number of nights, number of people, for tax compliance purposes. So, if we get in a report and it says they don't, they rented it for two days, and we're able to get on the platform and say, no, you rented it for 14 days, then we'll know that they're not submitting the proper tax, and we can, you know, take steps for notification of that.
Councilmember Scott?
Okay. So, do we have any idea of, like, projections of what we will collect once this is all passed? Seasonal, two, but I'm interested if you're-
I left my phone.
-the monitoring, monitoring service, if you have any idea of what we would collect in a hotel motel tax?
I think our tax is 5%.
So on each one, it just depends on the cost of the Airbnb?
Depends, and then-
And then how frequently?
And then we'd get the licensing fee, which stands right now as $150. We decided it was gonna be 200, that, well, no, it'll be $200, $150 fee, $50 inspection fee.
But since we're removing the first?
Okay.
Well, so then no projections on, okay. Oh, we should see some evidence from that.
But I can figure, I'll see if I can get finance to help me with some projections.
I'm just interested.
Bring that back.
I'm kind of excited about what we could do.
I'll, I'll, I'll get some idea.
Councilmember Hall?
So, do you feel like it's important to add services?
I do, especially maybe, especially when they can get in deeper on this tax, helping with the tax compliance. It'd be about another $3,200 a year. They sent me some instructional type, some videos that I wasn't able to look at when I got them last week. It'll give me a little more idea of what they do do, but I haven't had time to sit and watch them all and go through the tutorial that I think they sent me. But I think it is. Now, I don't know, we're up for a renewal in April on the address identification. That's around $7,500. Depending on, I mean, if we ended up with 400 addresses, it could go up. But we're, we've been holding pretty steady at about 190 to 200 over the last number of months. I think some of that will drop off. Some people will say, you know, only do it once every whatever. I don't want to go through this whole thing. And so I think we will have, see a reduction of a little bit, but I don't, maybe 30 or something. But I think the fee will cover the cost of the monitoring service.
Which is the $7,500.
Plus, right, because 150 times whatever, you know.
I'll just do the quick math. If it's 200, it's $30,000 a year for the license fee.
Okay.
That would cover the cost of the-
Without my phone.
Of the additional, of the additional services as well.
Gotta have my phone.
Yeah, because that has been a running discussion, and I felt from the very beginning that it was really important that the fee be able to pay for the services that you need, because it's going to be an increase in staff time and-
It probably won't cover that.
No, no. I understand that part. But if we have the, the monitoring service with the modules that they need to relieve some of that, then I think it's really important that our fee get to cover that. So, you feel good about that?
And a little, just aside, it's a hot business. I wished I'd owned one, short-term rental monitoring, because remember, I was talking to Short-Term Rental Helper, and they were gobbled up by Host Compliance. Host Compliance has been gobbled up by Granicus now. Is that how you say it, Brenda? Who does our-
Same company that does our-
Wow.
They're still going to be called Host Compliance. Their fees are, all their customer service people there, I've talked to them, I got, you know, Brenda got a separate email saying that they, that service is being, I think, provided. And I got it, you know, then same day, I got something that says, yeah, now, so, now it's all one bit, now it's in a big company.
They're gonna give us a package deal, since we buy our legislator management software from them too?
They have a lot of platforms.
So, I mean, that's just been a, not even a year really, since the other one was bought by Host Compliance. But I will say their customer service is amazing. They call me, I call them, I email them, they, I know them, I ask them weird questions, and they're very, very, very accessible.
Any other questions?
Nice work, Jean.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else to add, Jean?
I'm so confused when I leave here. So what do I need to do?
Do you have, do you have the direction you need?
Next meeting.
Are we gonna do it one more time? Final, final stuff.
Everyone's thoughts on that. See it one more time?
We do it by email?
Yeah. What if we, as Brenda said, what if we email that out?
I think so, too.
Okay. Because we've gotta do some follow-up in the zoning ordinance and make those changes. And that was on, we didn't do that until we were sure that's right. Okay. No meeting email, okay.
All right. We have 17 minutes.